All right, let's bring the city council meeting for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to be replied, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans. Councilmember Roach.
Here.
Mayor Swatman. Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Baldwin and Councilmember McLeimans from this evening's council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, we have two proclamations and two appointments this evening. So the first one is the National Public Works Week, which I'll read. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Bonnie Lake. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are responsible for the maintenance, operations, planning, design, and construction of streets, transportation, facilities, water and sewer utilities, public buildings, parks, trails, and open space. And whereas, public works professionals are always first responders in times of natural disasters and other emergencies that impact the city. And whereas, the two thousand twenty-four National Public Works Week theme is advancing quality of life for all, which shines a spotlight on the way public work professionals advance our quality of life, whether as a first responder to an electricity outage, regular waste pickup, or a myriad of other ways they silently serve their communities. Now therefore, I Terry Carter, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, do hereby proclaim May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four as National Public Works Week. And I encourage the Bonnie Lake community to join me in recognizing the contributions that public works and our team make every day to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. And we have a second proclamation. This one is for Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas, Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. And whereas, there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bonnie Lake Police Department. And whereas, nearly sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately seventeen thousand injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently twenty-four thousand sixty-seven law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And two hundred eighty-two new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including one hundred eighteen officers killed in two thousand twenty-three and one hundred sixty-four officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored across the country. And whereas, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of our all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas, the members of the Bonnie Lake Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the United, of the city of Bonnie Lake. Now therefore, I Terry Carter, Mayor of Bonnie Lake, with the full backing and encouragement of the entirety of the Bonnie Lake City Council, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth to May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four as National Police Week and proclaim May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to be Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Bonnie Lake and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness thereof, I have here done to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bonnie Lake to be affixed to this fourteenth day of May two thousand twenty-four. All right, now for our first appointment, Madam Clerk.
This is AB twenty-four forty-six, motion twenty-four forty-six. The council motion would be to approve the mayor's reappointment of Justin Evans to the Civil Service Commission with a term ending April sixth, two thousand thirty.
No move? Or second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, I was an aye there. I didn't get to my mute button.
And our next appointment, Madam Clerk.
This is AB twenty-four thirty-five, motion twenty-four thirty-five. The council motion would be to appoint three city officials as voting delegates to represent the city of Bonnie Lake at the two thousand twenty-four Association of Washington City's Annual Conference Business Meeting to be held on June twenty-second from four PM to five forty-five PM.
Any volunteers? So Deputy Mayor Swatman, Councilmember Hubler, Councilmember Fullerton.
We're gonna arm wrestle for Aaron. Doesn't mean, you know, if you know the scenario, right? Councilmember Evans is that there's specialized meeting. You can still go to the meeting, but it's just the voting people that'll be in that meeting. It's kind of a formality.
Councilmember Davis.
Davis, Evans, I was reading, I can't read it all.
He's like, I made the same mistake.
You're sitting in the same. Kind of like, you're just a good replacement.
All right, we had the three volunteers. Do we need to have a vote on that, or are we good?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of Councilmember Hubler, Deputy Mayor Swatman, and Councilmember Fullerton being voting representatives for the city of Bonnie Lake at the AWC conference, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well, thank you. All right, seeing there's no public hearing, we'll go on to citizen comments. This is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Council Mayor, I'm past Councilmember Dan Decker. I reside at two oh four and Seventh Street, Bonnie Lake, Washington. Number one, we the people here and now say, Mayor, chapter one of one thousand. We are in the present. Maybe we should look at the past. Who knows what we might find? The year two thousand and nine. Small town off the Columbia River called Ridgefield, Washington. Not far, not far from a small town called Sandy, Oregon. What's the importance of Ridgefield and Sandy? One of our beloved lived in both cities. The Oregon courts wanted to have a chat with this person. There was an issue concerning some type of abuse that the courts wanted to clear up. This person was extradited from Ridgefield, Washington to Calumac, Oregon County Jail for criminal reasons. The person was placed into the Calaboose for several weeks with bail set at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This person has been charged and convicted of thirteen felonies of criminal abuse. This person received six contempt of court actions while under the court control with bail set at another fifty thousand dollars. He would have, if I would have known this about the secret Kerry Hubler was hiding from us, I would have never voted for Kerry Hubler to be a councilperson. Maybe this above information was part of that preparation Hubler spoke of to become the mayor of the city of Bonnie Lake. Kerry Hubler goes by various names, including Kerry R. Brennack, Kerry Davenport, Kerry Renee Izzy. By the by, how is your friend, Mr. Heller? Thank you, counsel. I'm very disappointed in learning things about people, especially when they're such a bunch of hypocrites and screaming about something that didn't matter, when in reality, there was something that really did matter. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for the good of the order? We'll now start those that are virtual. You have five minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Don't see anybody turn theirs on. The city will now disable all video and microphones for those attending virtually. We have no correspondence. Next would be committee reports. Finance Committee, please.
Moved away from my notes here.
Okay. That's okay.
Tonight, we had our finance committee meeting. We had several items, which include, of course, personnel update. The notable one in that, of course, they're using a temporary fill-in for Mr. Sullivan's old position. So it's nice to see that they're not having him do two things at the same time. We like that. Looking forward to the mayor's recommendation on that position in the future, the permanent one. Also, discussion items were resolution twenty-four dash forty, which is the one twenty-one fund expenditure. That's a specific drug forfeiture fund that comes from drug forfeitures to the city, and it can be expended on specific things. So it'll come forward to the next council meeting for full finance issue and discussion. It's recommended pass on that. Resolution twenty-four forty-five, which is procurement of the WACS utility product skid-mounted vacuum unit, which is basically a small vac truck. We have two vac trucks that are very large. This is a smaller one. It'll be much better to work with out there in the field in small spots. So that was recommended for passage and will be on a future council meeting. Authorize also separate issue resolution M twenty-four dash forty-three, which is authorization of some of the funds that were previously transferred, left over with the ARPA situation. And we have some interest monies out there, and that was recommended to be used for a couple of, well, one project, Stormwater Visual Inspection Project, which is, supports MPDS permitting effort. Also, funding continuation for a couple of parks employees. Part, they are limited-term employees currently right now, and the legal specialist, limited term. That'll be coming forward for a future full council consideration, as recommended pass out of the committee with also hopefully recommended to include in the ongoing budgetary process as permanent positions, but we'll see what the full council thinks on that. Also, resolution twenty-four forty-nine, which is a joint recreation program interlocal agreement with Sumner. As we know, they supply a lot of the facilities and some funding for our joint recreation program. School Board is going to consider that. It's been through a few rounds between the agencies, and we are signing it hopefully this evening. And we will be waiting, see if the school district will sign off on the same. So those were recommended passage and open committee discussion included. The infamous, of course, funding for general fund sources are out there. As you can see, some of these things are general fund-type issues with like permanent employees. So the B and O tax is floating around again, and it will be coming forward to a future council full discussion. That's not a very simple process, so it's, it's, it has to be instituted correctly and carefully to make sure we don't get carried away with making it overly convoluted. The accounting change is making some significant issues in there. That was it for this evening.
Thank you. Community Development Committee, please.
Yes, we met last Tuesday. I believe we met at four thirty last week, had a announcement that we'd be meeting early, because we had a lot to discuss. We talked about AB twenty-four forty-one, which is the Relight Washington Grant. And since this is a grant, and it's not going to be coming out of any funds, that was put on tonight's consent agenda. Then AB twenty-four forty-eight is the sewer treatment regulations, which will be on full council tonight, recommended by the committee. And then AB twenty-four thirty-one is Allen York Hart Boat Trailer Parking. So that has been set for the workshop next week on the twenty-first. Also, just a reminder that next week, the twenty-fourth, twenty-first, we'll be doing our water treatment tour, and that begins at three forty-five is where we can meet the van here to ride down, and then we will be back in time to do our workshop. So the CDC meeting has been canceled for next week in order to accommodate the tour. We also have discussed our JAC, which is the Joint Advisory Committee. We're working on possibly having a June fourth meeting with Sumner and the Water Treatment Plant. And that ended our discussion. So that is all I have.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, please.
I'm standing in for Councilmember Baldwin. She is our chair, but she is currently at a graduation tonight. So I have her meeting notes from our public safety meeting that was today at three thirty PM. Our next one is June eleventh, which is Tuesday at three thirty PM, just upstairs. The East Pierce Fire Report, Proposition One passed and was certified a week and a half ago. With that, we've been able to add in two additional medic units, one that will be at Station one eleven in Bonnie Lake and one at Prairie Ridge. And there is a vacant commissioner position currently, and they are trying to fill that by next Tuesday. Bonnie Lake Police Department has had bronze pieces from the statue that have been recovered. Not the whole statue, but the boy and bird statue. They got some reports and were able to go and pick up some of those pieces. There has been a trend in the region of increase in juvenile crimes. The chief did ask for a, is put in for a grant to get an automated fingerprint system, which would help the entire city, including the school district. And they, the chief also put in for a grant for a flock camera system, and the data from that would be retained for thirty days. He will let us know more information on that once he knows if he gets the grant or not, and then it would be brought forward to city council to consider whether it would be something we would want to do or not. On prosecutor's office, one person graduated from community court. That is a wonderful opportunity for someone to do better with their whole life. There are currently fifteen active participants. And then ARPA funding would help to utilize and keep the legal specialist source. I'm trying to go through her notes and, you know. So the ARPA funding would help to keep our legal specialist one that is currently funded by the ARPA funding. It is coming forward on Finance Committee as well. And I think that's it. That's it.
You. I don't see any other reports, so we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're good? All right, and we have Finance Committee issues and three full council issues. So the first item, Madam Clerk.
This is, this is AB twenty-four thirty-six, resolution twenty-four thirty-six. The council motion would be to authorize the additional funds for vehicle RS two three five.
Is there a motion? Some of.
Second.
Okay, a discussion.
Just to make sure people know that this is a funding that they tried to purchase this vehicle was in two thousand nineteen was when it was approved, correct? And then the, when it was twenty twenty, COVID happened, and that meant that the vehicle couldn't be ordered or purchased at that time. So the cost of the vehicle has gone up? And is it, Jason, was it just the vehicle that was that funding that we had talked about?
It's the equipment to go on the vehicle. So we've received the vehicle, so it's basically the truck cab and the chassis. And then we take it to the fab shop, that's the name of it, to have all the things put on, so it actually is a usable vehicle. And between the time that it was authorized, and now the cost has gone up. So the, there's additional funds to need to put that vehicle in the service to basically add the dump bed and the box for the sewer utility to put that vehicle in the service. But we already have the vehicle. This is just to outfit it so it goes into productive service.
Don't see any other discussion. All, all in favor of resolution R two four dash three six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next issue, Madam Clerk.
Boarder Mayor?
Yes.
Just wondering, because I can't hear online, so I'm not sure if, if we're getting a, an aye. So if, if we don't have another one, do we have quorum? Or do we have enough? Because there's four of us here.
I think Councilmember Roach is raising his hand.
Yeah, he had a hand up there. Yes, Councilmember Roach, did you have something to say?
Can you hear me?
I think that was an aye.
I think that's.
Can you hear me?
See. Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
This is AB twenty-four forty-eight, ordinance D twenty-four forty-eight. The council motion would be to establish sewage pretreatment regulations for users of the publicly-owned treatment works pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the city of Bonnie Lake and the city of Sumner for the coordination of cooperative wastewater services and adding a new chapter thirteen point fourteen entitled Wastewater Pretreatment Regulations to the Bonnie Lake Municipal Code, providing for severability and corrections and establishing an effective date.
Motion?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hopefully, we have people here to talk about it, right? So I just put this on full council so that, for transparency, to make sure that everybody understands kind of what's going on. Originally, we thought that we would be able to adopt the code and just reference the code to Sumner's Water Treatment Plant, but, because this is quite extensive. And so we were unable to do that, so we're adding it to the, a new chapter thirteen in the Bonnie Lake Municipal Code to match what Sumner's Municipal Code and water waste treatment regulations are. Most of our businesses are in compliance. This is not something that we have a choice on. This was brought down from the state. However, it's actually more of a benefit to us because we're making the regulations are going to be localized. Therefore, instead of using the Department of Ecology through the state to get the permits, whenever we open a business here in Bonnie Lake, they can actually call upon Andrea down in Sumner, and she's our inspector, but she will come with one of our water, one of our utility, Bonnie Lake's utility people. So together, they will go and discuss the permit options that they need and any equipment that they might need to purchase in order to make the business compliant with the treat, the pretreatment program before it goes into the sewer system. We've got to get all the fats and oils and everything out of the water before it goes down into the water treatment plant to, so that they can get all, make sure there's no harmful chemicals killing their little bugs and everything. So if anybody has any questions, we do have Andrea, and she's here, and I forgot your name. I'm sorry.
It's Michael Coles.
Michael, yeah.
And Jay Swift.
Right, thank you. And so they are here. If anybody has any questions on this, I just wanted to make sure that all of your questions got answered. Like I said originally, we thought that we would be able to just reference their code for Sumner, but we did end up having to make a brand-new code, a new ordinance here in Bonnie Lake. So that's what this is about tonight.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Sure. Yeah, so I was trying to look it up, but chapter thirteen, is that development regulation?
It's public services, and that's where the rest of our sewer regulations are at, so.
I heard her say development regulations, and I was.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah. So Title thirteen is where we have the water and sewer regulations. And then, so not to kind of co-mingle it with the other sewer regulations, we're establishing a new chapter in its entirety, thirteen point fourteen for pretreatment.
Doesn't require Planning Commission review.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of ordinance D two four dash four eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I, yeah, I see the hand, and of course, it's, it's, there's a delay, but I'm, yeah, I think the question, is it an aye or a nay?
We don't have a smiley face or a happy.
Yeah.
I think it's an aye.
Councilmember Roach, are you able to say yes or no on this one?
He's alive.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
For some reason, it's not working.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, our next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB twenty-four forty-four, motion twenty-four forty-four. The council motion would be to allow the recreation program to spend up to a hundred and forty-eight thousand more than it brings in for revenue for two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, and discussion?
We had a lot of discussion on that. We have, we have, we have discussed and discussed and discussed this so heavily because it is trying to fund this recreation program and make sure that our kids and adults have the ability to still get out and do things. So there are other ways that we are working together to try and help the recreation program to get better funding. But this was a way to allow them to continue through this year and get moving forward on all the other things that are coming up. As they, David Wells works with the mayor and administration on figuring out funding and how to make this a really great opportunity for our youth.
Thank you. No other discussion. All those in favor of motion M twenty-four dash four four, say aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? Very good. And our, I saw, and our next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB twenty-four forty-seven, motion twenty-four forty-seven. The council motion would be to direct staff to incorporate a proposed amendments contained in the attached community development Phase One document into the final version of Envision Bonnie Lake.
Motion?
No move.
For a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Sounds so enthusiastic.
Like, come on. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Yeah, no, I, once again, of course, thank all the people that worked on this. I think, you know, the planning agency and the council did a lot of work digging into this, committee work, especially, of course, Jason Sullivan, his interim public services director position is continued to provide value for the citizens, you know, aligning the vision of the future with what we as the council kind of set forth. Just note that, you know, some people could read certain things in this document and say, oh, that's not right. But it, it's a, it's a overall guidance document, kind of a big framework type of piece. So don't look at it individually and try to look at the whole context of what's going on there. It's, it'll come together once we get ten thousand pieces put together in this thing. Doing the comp plan is huge. So very good. Congratulations to everyone again for doing all this hard work. Thank you.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I was reading through the protect the property rights of the landowners, and I just really appreciate this. Was this something that, that you were personally able to do, or was this part of kind of the RCWs? Because I really appreciate that. We've got a huge little section here, and I guess that's an oxymoron, but a huge section. Two pages, and then it says provide, so then the CD twelve is to provide property owners the opportunity to. the opportunity to participate in local decision-making when the decisions affect their lives and their property. And it's got a big shall in there, which I really appreciate, so. Will there be like a community resource for people to file their complaints or to talk about any property issues? Or will it just be like here at city council, if they feel like something in the comprehensive plan is affecting their livelihood?
It depends on the issue. It's if it's legislative, there'll be public hearings at the Planning Commission. There's always the Planning Commission that, you know, serves as the advisory body to the city council on land use legislative issues. Also, when we're doing development proposals, some of those depend on scale and scope, require public notice. There's an opportunity to provide public comments to the planning staff. And then there's also some development proposals actually require a public hearing, and they provide, they can provide testimony at those levels. And of course, you know, citizens are always encouraged to come to the Planning Commission and City Council and voice concerns, frustrations. No system is perfect. It's all about making improvements as you operate the system. And this is just trying to recognize the council's direction to staff to make sure that we include that as part of our decision-making process.
I really appreciate all your work. Thank you. I know you've really worked hard to make sure that you are aligning with how the council feels, especially about property rights. And so I just really appreciate your hard work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on to staff. I can't take all the credit. And I think there's a whole, there's a whole staff that's working on this over at the, the Public Service Center, and I will pass it on to them. They're doing a lot of the heavy lifting. I'm just the, I get the role of the spokesman now, so.
Take them for me.
I will do that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of motion M two four dash four seven, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? You're good. Seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Do you think we're going to get a grant for the block?